Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this regular city council meeting to order. If you'll all rise to the invocation that this evening will be led by Pastor Grant Foster from Riverside Church.
Lord, we thank you first and foremost for the privilege we get to live in this beautiful city we call Sebastian. And we ask tonight, Lord, in this meeting of our city officials, Lord, that you give them divine wisdom, knowledge, revelation to be able to govern our city according to your will and purposes. We thank you for each and every citizen, and we pray blessing on this city, blessing on this meeting tonight, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. If you'd remain standing this evening, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Boy Scout Troop of America 555. Forward.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yovino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any modifications to the agenda this evening?
No.
All right. Hearing none. It's going to be a great honor and privilege to go into the next segment. Chief of Police has some accommodations to hand out, and I would like to join her down at the lectern.
Hi, thank you all for being here. It's always a pleasure to recognize some of the wonderful things that our police officers do. And these three officers, Sergeant Marsenick, Officer Quinn, and Corporal Rivas, back in February saved a man in a burning building. So I'm going to read what Lieutenant Savitas, who nominated them for the life-saving award. On February 9th, at approximately 3:00 a.m., Sergeant Marsenick responded to Valencia Street in reference to a structure fire. Upon his arrival, he observed heavy smoke emanating from the rear of the residence. Receiving information from a neighbor, the homeowner was still inside. Sergeant Marsenick immediately entered into the residence in attempts to locate the owner. Once inside, Sergeant Marsenick began yelling out in attempts to determine where the owner was located. Due to the intense heat and smoke, Sergeant Marsenick was forced to exit the residence in order to gain some fresh air. He was concerned the owner would not be able to safely exit the residence on his own and re-entered the burning structure. He ended up going further into the house to locate the bedrooms and found the owner. A short time later, he heard the owner acknowledge his presence in the burning building. Sergeant Marsenick was able to determine his location as being one of the rear bedrooms of the residence and immediately proceeded to make his way to his location. Upon locating the owner, he observed him to be standing in a corner and appeared to be very disoriented and would not leave. Due to the intense heat and heavy smoke, Sergeant Marsenick had to again leave the building to get fresh air. While Sergeant Marsenick was outside the residence catching his breath, Corporal Rivas and Officer Quinn arrived on scene, at which time Sergeant Marsenick apprised them of the owner's location within the residence. Sergeant Marsenick led the officers back into the burning residence, fully determined to rescue the owner and not allowing him to succumb to the intense heat and heavy smoke. All three officers were able to successfully locate and extract him from the burning residence all while he was refusing to leave. They made sure he was immediately transported to the Sebastian Medical Center, and then he was later sent to Orlando due to severe smoke inhalation. If not for the swift and determined actions of all the officers involved, this gentleman most certainly would have succumbed to the intense smoke and heat caused by the fire and ultimately perished in his residence. So it's with great honor that I present them all with a life-saving award. One other thing I'd like, they have a great showing of support, A, with the police department, but they're family. Please stand up for all of these officers. Look at these guys. We certainly appreciate you guys coming, and thank you all for all you do for the police department.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. It is a great honor and a privilege to be able to just be a part of a city that you guys are a part of. Knowing that it's men and women like you who are out there every single day, selflessly running into a burning building to save the life of just one person, it really makes me so proud and honored to be a part of the city. You guys make me proud. You guys make me want to continue to serve you, and I'm just so honored and privileged that you guys are the heroes that are out there on the streets making these things happen. So thank you very much.
We have one more presentation. Debbie Hovas, please come down. Dennis, you can come too. This is a citizens appreciation, a certificate of appreciation award, and it's an absolute great pleasure to give this to Debbie Hovas, who I've known for almost 33 years. What a lot of you may not know is Dennis Hovas retired as a police sergeant with the city of Sebastian back in 2011, I believe, and we went through the police academy together back in '86, very long time ago. But this moment is about Debbie. A few months ago, we deal with identity theft and scams all the way, every day. We get a lot of complaints from people that have given up money and fall victim to this. Well, Debbie, a few months ago, had a young lady come into the Dollar General where she's the manager on 512, who was looking to purchase a Google Play gift card. She was on the phone, talking with someone, while she was trying to purchase this Google Play gift card from Debbie. And Debbie kept asking her questions. Why are you buying this? What's going on? She knew something wasn't right. And it turned out that this was definitely a scam that she had seen on Facebook. And unfortunately, this person was so able to convince this young lady that she was there to purchase this gift card, and we all know she would have been without the money, absolutely. But Debbie knew that this was not true, and she convinced her to hang up. And she did, and saved her quite a lot of money. And if only more of our citizens and our cashiers and our clerks would do this and pay attention when these victims come in to buy all these gift cards, if they would see that this is suspicious activity, we wouldn't have near as many victims as we do. So it's definitely a pleasure to present Debbie Hovas with a certificate of appreciation from the police department.
Thank you. We've got to teach them to use those cameras a little quicker, I think, right?
Thank you very much. I really do appreciate it, and Debbie is just a wonderful person. If you guys see her at Dollar General, please thank her in person, and of course, if you see Dennis, thank him for his service. But thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's always so fun to be able to recognize such great people in our community. Again, the police that we have in this community are second to none, and the citizenry do a great job of keeping their eyes open and protecting others around them. So again, very, very proud to be a resident of Sebastian and certainly to serve you all. I had to dig my glasses out. Usually I'm reading down there, so it's better this way. All right, so we're through that. We have any announcements from council members this evening?
No.
All right. Seeing none, that'll move us to the consent agenda.
Item 7.
Item E, please.
That was item E. All right. Anything else?
With approval of item A through D, F through G, H.
All right. Thank you.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yovino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I'd just kind of like to ask, if I can, the staff what the emphasis for this change was. I don't see there's really any change to this based on the items that are marked in yellow on it. So I guess I can understand the mechanics of the section that was marked on page 56 of our agenda, which is, unless not otherwise prohibited by this policy, that's just a statement that falls in there. But the addition to use of equipment and facilities, I don't know that that's any different than what we've always done. What's the emphasis for?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this clarifies that we were asked as staff to look at this and clarify that this is a government facility for government use, and any other use would have to be approved by the city council.
Can you define other use for me?
If any public group wanted to come in and just use a commission, council chambers, they would have to get approval from city council.
Okay. Let's just talk about a couple of things then. How about the Chamber of Commerce and their candidate forum?
They would have to get approval from the...
Okay. So on page 55 of our handout, it specifically says that political debates can be done in here, and it outlines the rules by which parties can apply to do a political debate.
That was the old resolution. There was a resolution, I believe, that was out...
That's in the document we're asked to approve tonight. On page 55 of our handout, under "Live Coverage, Stipulations, Political Debates and Candidate Forums Conducted by Local Charitable and Community Service Nonprofit Organizations" will be shown live when scheduled as approved by the city council. And then it goes on further to talk about what, they have to show that they've done this, they've got experience and so forth. So I guess, I don't really care whether we change this policy or not. I just don't understand why we're changing the policy when it doesn't really change the policy.
Well, it clarifies that it has to come back to you all for any... Before, it was left up to the city clerk and the city manager. This is, my understanding, it clarifies it, and I know the city attorney...
Well, the first sentence under that live coverage says stipulated is approved by the city council. So that stipulated, the city council had to approve that. And then it also then lays out criteria that those organizations would have to flow through if they have to do that.
Right.
So I just don't see where we've made any change to the policy. And we've changed this policy, I went back and looked, we've changed this policy like eight times in the last six years or something like that. So every time we change it, we just keep adding little pieces to it.
Right.
So I just don't understand why we're doing it, and what's the reason for doing it.
The reason staff and the attorney was asked to look at it was, was to make sure that this facility was used for government groups and not private groups, was the direction that we were asked to look at.
What private group has used it?
Well, it's like the chamber, different businesses that wanted to use it, was my understanding. It was prior to my coming year, so...
I've been watching stuff in this chamber for 18 years, and I haven't seen a private group use it. The only non-city group are the candidate debates and the Lagoon Council and their pseudo-government, so...
Well, the Lagoon Council is a government organization, government-backed.
That's the only ones that I know that have used it. I can't think of anybody else that's used it. I just don't, just me personally, I don't understand why we're...
Understand.
We're trying to kill something with a hammer, and I don't know what the hammer's hitting.
I personally would be in favor of removing that paragraph, "Political Debates and Candidate Forums Conducted." I don't think we should have political debates or candidate forums in this chamber. I think that's, I mean, I remember back when we originally allowed it, was to disseminate information.
Okay.
Because there was no other ways for these organizations to disseminate information. But now there's tons of different ways. They can do it on Facebook Live, they can Skype their events, they can do all kinds of different ways to disseminate information. So I would be in favor of passing this with the removal of the political debates paragraph completely.
Well, if that's the objective of the change, then let's be specifically straight on what the objective is. And instead of adding language back here under use that really doesn't mean anything, if there's the will among the council to remove that, then remove it. Because let's be straightforward about what we're trying to accomplish. Let's don't try to scam things. I really have issues with that personally. So if that's the straightforward thing we want to do, that's fine. I don't have any issue with it. We can vote on that, and each of us can vote whichever way we choose to vote.
Right. And I personally don't think there's any scam involved in it at all. I just think it was for clarification purposes, and I would also suggest that both the organizations that were essentially written into the use of these chambers decided last year that they didn't want to utilize them, and because they have other methods to transmit the information. So my preference would be to approve the changes to the policy, but to strike the paragraph about political debates.
Would that basically eliminate the use of the chambers for political purposes?
Yes, it would. And the reason I hesitate on it, because there is still language in there that council can approve. Of course, the council can approve anything. So if somebody came along with something, they would still have that right, but it would take that out as a vested right to do it. It wouldn't have to come back to you. But yeah, that paragraph on page 55 of the agenda overall, page two of the policy. Yeah, I think it's high time, I think it's high time we quit spending taxpayer dollars on those forums when the information can be disseminated. So my motion is to pass item E and strict the paragraph on page 55 that starts with "political." All right. No second to that?
Second.
No, I have a second to that. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Damian Gilliam, 1623 U.S. Highway 1, president of Sebastian Property Owners Association. We could be reached at sebastianpropertyowners.com. Mr. Mayor, let me refresh everybody's memory, because I've been in the community almost 40 years. And this chamber has a very sophisticated broadcasting facility. And the reason why we use the chamber is to get the message out. Come election time, we have a debate so the community can see and choose amongst who they want to vote for. And the two organizations that use the chamber for the debate was the Sebastian Property Owners Association and the Chamber of Commerce. Now, because I'm the president of the Sebastian Property Association, I can understand why they want to do this. This is your way of limiting access of our taxpayer facility and usage of it, and that's not correct. That's not fair. You have an advantage because you're up there, you broadcast twice a month from the dais, it gets to be replayed over and over again. The one time that the public has the right to pick and choose and hear the candidates is that one time a year when those two organizations have it. You just, and this is my personal opinion, and we'll find out how you vote tonight, you want to limit that. You know, I worked for ABC News. Social media is very powerful also. But when Comcast turned the broadcasting facilities over to this community, they didn't turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, and your cohorts up there. It turned it over to the public. This is the public's building. This is the taxpayers' building. Now you're limiting our freedom of speech and using the excuse that we should not have political debates here. What better place than to discuss the issues that concerns this community in a public forum where it's broadcast live throughout the community and played back a few times, not many, but it gives the people who are the registered voters of this town, who very few of them turn out to vote, I might add, 15 percent, and you want to take that away from us? As a matter of fact, the last election, the Chamber of Commerce, normally has one every year, they decided not to have one this past year. Why? Because it was effective for them to get their candidates in. But now that the Sebastian Property Owners Association has a new board of directors, we have a new organization, we're building very fastly from five people to close to 100 now in less than two to three months, and we plan on reaching 3,000. We're now building alliances with everybody in the North County. We're going to make sure that the taxpayers get the message come election time, and you want to take that away from us tonight. So we know who's running, I'm not going to mention, I'm sure they're probably going to run again, but I will be running. And I think you're doing a disservice, and our organization may want to use this chambers to get the message out, and you're going to deny us that right. So God bless America. Make America great, Mr. Mayor. Let's make Sebastian great. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue? All right. Seeing none. Council, this is just a matter of, last year, both organizations decided not to do it because they could disseminate their information in other ways. I don't believe that we should be utilizing this. It's not necessary anymore with today's technology to utilize taxpayer dollars to get political debate into the public. I think that the organizations, if they feel a need to have debates, which I'm sure they will, then there's plenty of ways that they can disperse it without utilizing taxpayer dollars. And it does cost money for us to utilize these chambers and to put those events on.
Okay. Let me just kind of make clear, I didn't bring this up because of the Property Owners Association. I just felt like if we were going to change it, let's change it so it has some teeth to it. I think that, I think the Property Owners Association, and I'll just say it, it's becoming more political, it's starting to operate like a PAC instead of a community organization in some regard, so I don't have any issues with that. I just felt like if we're going to change it, I still believe that it would be appropriate for the Chamber of Commerce if they choose, and the Property Owners Association if they can prove they're non-political. They have to prove that they're non-political to do that. But I still think it's taken such appropriate service to the citizens to see the candidates and have them ask questions and have them answer those questions as a group at the same time. We've all been to the other forums where we go in and we talk to the Indian River County whatever, this or that, but it's only the small number of people that are there that hear that and see it. So I still think it's appropriate on that. So I'm not doing this because of any tight alliance with the Property Owners Association. I'm doing it because I still believe it's a valid service.
Okay. The only problem I have with that is that there's nothing in here that says that the Property Owners Association has to prove they're not political.
No, it does. It says, in this paragraph, it says in here that each organization that hosts that, "They shall verify the information established in their competence and experience in hosting at least one prior event. Cities shall not air political programming or campaign on behalf of any candidate." So if the Property Owners Association comes forward with a political agenda, with a slate of candidates that they support, then they're certainly supporting a candidate. So there is an opportunity to deal with that from that perspective. And once again, it would be on the Property Owners Association, it would be their responsibility to prove that they're not falling within those regards. So...
And I suppose the president of that...
I think there's safeguards in here for the council to question that. I know it would not be clean, and I know it would be messy. I understand that.
And the so-called president of that organization just announced that he's going to be running.
Well, I understand, and I know that. And I'd have to, at the time that they want to do a debate, it'd be interesting to see what their current charter says. Their existing charter says that they're a non-political organization. If their existing charter at the time that they want to do a debate doesn't say they're a non-political organization, and that kind of changes the emphasis of being non-political, nonprofit.
Yeah, we should probably ask for the bylaws of the organization, as well as the minutes of the meetings that took place to do the takeovers and stuff.
We have opportunities, we have opportunities at the time that the request comes in for us to evaluate the organization and basically say no if they don't fit the letter of the law within this paragraph. That's my only point. I hate to punish, I shouldn't say punish, but I hate to remove an option that citizens have to see the candidates for office, see them answer the same questions and provide input that the citizens can use in an effort to judge whether they want to vote for someone or not. It's the reason that I have emphasis on this.
And I understand that. I truly understand that. My only, my biggest beef is that both the organizations last year decided not to because they felt they could disseminate in other ways and were spending taxpayer dollars on it. Any other comments?
No.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McPartland, Mrs. Fisher, didn't we do something live with TC Palm or Press Journal live at their office in Vero, like one or two events before we ever did this, when we ran the last time?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So this isn't the only venue for that to happen, and I agree with Mr. Hill. I mean, there's Facebook Live, social media-wise, I think is bigger than broadcasting it here in the chambers. There's other alternatives to broadcasting it and getting it out to people.
And the chamber actually did it by email last year. They didn't hold a public forum, but they did it by email to the candidates running and disseminated it to all of their members.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry. This is a forum.
I don't care one way or another. You know, it really doesn't matter to me. You know, I just want to be, because in the past, we had the opioid summit, which the chamber put on, and we participated in. We had a great crowd. And in the past, I've utilized the chambers, because we had a session on child predators and the dangers of the internet concerning kids, that we're not stopping that. I mean, again, anybody who wants to come utilize the chambers has to come before council. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I don't see what the difference is.
Right. Well, the only thing this does is it eliminates the use of the chambers for political debate. It doesn't eliminate the use of the chambers for pseudo-governments like where you had the opioid meeting and those types of things. It does not eliminate the use of chambers for any of that. It doesn't eliminate the use of chambers for the supervisor of elections to come and host, to put the voting machines in. It doesn't eliminate it for any of the governmental organizations like the Lagoon Council, or even if the, in Indian River County, commissioners wanted to have one of their meetings up here. All of those things are still allowed to happen. This just eliminates public, or political debate in these chambers.
Right. And as far as I understand, the city of Vero Beach does not utilize their chambers for any political debate.
Correct.
Nor does the Board of County Commissioners.
Correct.
Nor does Felsmer.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to remove the addition on page 60, which, that, if you remove the political debate thing and then you remove that, then it doesn't take, it doesn't impact the possibility of organizations like Mr. McPartland just referenced to use the facility? Because this says government-only entities. And in this, it related to entity with the city council. I don't know, is there some city attorney? Is there some conflict?
Well...
Because it says specifically, "Government-only."
Right. And I will tell you, part of the reason for that language, and it said sponsored by a government, because we figured like the opioid summit that was here, the sheriff was strongly involved in that, and you know...
I don't think we should.
Could have sponsored, you know, the human trafficking could be sponsored by, you know, the city, or the sheriff, or DCF, or whoever. The focus, to be honest with you, if I had, you know, my choice, it'd be to probably consider doing a more comprehensive overhaul of this, not to stop what you're planning on doing today, but the one thing I would like to see is less subjectivity in deciding who's going to use this or not, because that gets into First Amendment issues. You know, okay, we're going to let this organization, but not that. And that's why we tried to kind of limit it to anyone who is sponsored by a governmental entity, because that's kind of a bright line. We could say, okay, there's a public function here because it's sponsored by a governmental entity. Once you cross back over to the private side, but then pick and choose who can use it, you're kind of getting into content-based decisions of saying, well, we're going to let this group use it because we like what they have to say, but we're not going to let this other group use it because we don't like what they're going to say. So that was kind of the thought process of putting the governmental language in here.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
No.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Counsel, that moves us up to committee reports and appointments. So we have a few appointments to make this evening. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee has three appointments. We have one term expiring on May 31st, 2022, and I would recommend that we place Dante Renzi in that position.
Agree with that.
Any problems with that? In the subsequent positions, I would place Louis Agudelo and John Denise.
And, um, Agudelo?
Agudelo.
Agudelo?
Yes.
For the alternative position, and John Denise in the regular position, is that all right?
That's fine, yeah. Any other things, some compliments?
I'd like to see Mr. Agudelo be moved into the other seat, and Mr. Denise as the alternate.
All right, so we can vote on that, we'll take the regular member position first. We're going to either say Mr. Agudelo or Mr. Denise. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avino?
Agudelo.
Councilmember McPartland?
Agudelo.
Mayor Hill?
Agudelo.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Agudelo.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Agudelo, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll go ahead and place Mr. Denise in the alternate position. Thank you all very much for your service, we appreciate you wanting to serve. Next is the Natural Resources Board, Ms. Olson has decided that she wishes to stay on there, I have no problems with that, and I would like to appoint her to the term to expire 1/20/20.
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. We have no public hearing this evening, there's no one finish cases. At this time, I'll ask anyone in the public who wishes to bring something to this council to come on forward, anything that's not currently on the agenda, yes, sir. You have five minutes, and please state your name and where you live, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Michael Tunic, I live at 1327 Shoreline Circle, and I wrote a letter to the council about a month ago concerning the Brooks property on 512 that seems to be way overdue in completing what they're supposed to do.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering what gives.
That's a great question, sir.
I mean, I, you know, we're concerned because we live there.
Understood.
I think that the people that live in Sebastian would be concerned also if they have to go past an area that looks like Fallujah every day and nothing's being done.
I can't disagree with you, I agree.
I mean, it's an eyesore, plus it's a safety, it's a safety problem. They have an open pond, debris all over the place, nothing to keep children from going in there, and, you know, somebody falls in that pond and they're gone. Like I said in my letter, I, you know, we have over 160 families that live in our development being held up by one man. I don't see the fairness here, and he's like two months beyond when he was supposed to have this done, you know, and even if he's not continuing doing what he's supposed to do, he's supposed to cut the weeds, keep it looking, I mean, it looks terrible, but at least it could look a little bit better. So I'm just curious as to what you plan to do to move this along and get it done, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Because this, you know, if he is not forced to do anything and he doesn't sell this property for 10 years, this is what it's going to look like.
Okay, I don't disagree with you, I have the same concerns that you have, I believe probably everyone up here has those same concerns. I've had discussions with staff relative to that property, and if you don't mind, I would like Mr. Carlisle to discuss a little bit about what we're doing at this time to try to rectify that situation.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So we have contacted DEP, because they have a DEP permit on that property, we contacted St. John's Water Management District, they have a water management permit, St. John's had answered back that they are in compliance with their water, new watering permit, we've sent them numerous letters, certified mail, and they haven't been collected, we've sent them to code, and code now is writing them three additional violations, and we will do a process server to get that to them for the exact things you're talking about, stabilizing the banks, seeding or sodding where it needs to be, and mowing the weeds, and getting it into shape, because that's part of his requirement. What Mr. Tunic is talking about in respect to the two months overdue, that was his site plan, if he didn't have his site plan done, he had to start over within those two months. He still has a DEP permit that's good until 2020 for his work. That doesn't negate the fact that he needs to mow the property, and then he needs to repair a couple culverts in there that weren't installed properly, which he has been cited for, and then the code enforcement's going to give him 15 days to get the site mowed and get it back into shape. We've had a problem with service on this gentleman, he refuses the certified letters, and hunting him down, he just doesn't want to respond, he knows when he responds that he's going to be held accountable, if he doesn't respond, we're going to take him to the magistrate, is the next, is the next event in July, he'd have to go to magistrate. So we're aware of it, we're working on it, but we can't just go in there and get a pound of flesh, we have to go through different processes, so, and I apologize, it has looked terrible, and we all agree, it's an eyesore by the library, and it needs to be addressed, and we're working to try to do it through code enforcement and community development and other organizations.
Okay, I just thought his time limit was April of 2019.
For his site plan, he had until, he had until April of 2019 to present a site plan to develop it, if he didn't submit a site plan, then he has to start over with his site plan approval process. That had nothing to do with his land clearing permits, or his DEP permits, or his St. John's Water Management, de-watering permits to fill in those ponds that he had filled in. That was his 2019 deadline for his site plan, which just means he has to start over, if he wants to put a building there, he's going to have to start the site plan process over again.
I mean, you know, there are other issues too, I mean, hurricane season's coming-
Yeah, so, sir-
There's a bunch of junk on the property that should be cleared and-
Right, so the bottom line on this is, we agree with you, and we're pursuing all our legal, everything we can do legally to get this site to code and to get it cleaned up. Sometimes it's unfortunate we get bad neighbors, but our goal is to have that rectified as fast as possible, and we're going through all legal recourse to get to that point. We are working on it, and I understand your concerns, I drive past it multiple times a day myself, so you're not alone in this, we're working hard to try to get it rectified.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your concerns. Anyone else wish to speak on any issue this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Diana Bolton, I'm, I live at George Street in Sebastian, and I am a 100-time master captain and have a degree in environmental marine science, and with a specialty in algae, and also have a degree in business and training in military science. I'm here today on behalf of the Sebastian Property Owners Association as their environmental chairperson. First, do more, know more harm and practice a precautionary principle. We all care about the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens and wildlife. You now are all in possession of the science and the alternatives to spraying the poisons in our community and in our waterways. Dr. Graham Cox gave an excellent presentation, and you have been copied with all the information and all the alternatives, yet now, even now, poison is continuing to be sprayed directly into our waterways, our parks, our playgrounds, and athletic fields. Our town is the largest single user of poisons, the city of Sebastian. We knew, we know there are dangers and people are getting sick, we know it has negatively impacted our wildlife, native plants, clams, sea grass, other marine life in our lagoon. We also know this is not what we want, and hundreds of people that I have spoken in front of and that have contacted me, all recognize the dangers and the liability, and we want it to stop. Clambers, fishermen, citizens, and wildlife lovers, we all know better now. The only objections I've heard are to do with budget, and the only other objection comes from those that have a vested interest to protect. Let's talk about the budget. At the last city council meeting, it was discussed that it would cost approximately a million dollars to clean up the deferred maintenance that we've put off for about 20 years because we've been using spray as a cheap alternative, and that it would take about $400,000 after that as an annual cost to keep it clean, for maintenance. We are now collecting in our stormwater fund approximately $2 million a year, so my math, if it takes a million dollars to clean it up and bring it up to par where it should be, and it costs us $400,000 a year, that means we're going to have, after the initial million-dollar cleanup, we're going to have $1,600,000 left over to play with, so budget is not an issue. We have political will, we have the science, and we have general consensus of 99.9% of our citizens that I've spoken to, anyway. Not to mention the liability, we have a lot of liability right now, three lawsuits alone on the federal and the state level of California, and on the federal level of the United States have netted the plaintiffs over $2 billion. We do not want to spend our assets in our beautiful community on fighting lawsuits of people getting sick. So let's be good upstream neighbors, and let's set a positive example like our northern neighbor did this month, Satellite Beach, and our southern neighbor did last week, Martin County, as well as the city of Miami, several countries, and other towns, Fort Myers Beach also just passed the ordinance. We're all in this together, and we all want to eat clams and fish in our river without getting sick like we used to. I also want to include a letter from, that was given to the council by Tim Glover, president of the Friends of the St. Sebastian River, which I also serve on that board, and this letter should have been forwarded to you all, but I'll paraphrase it. He's requesting that there be an update on the status and the effects of spraying herbicides, specifically the Roundup and glyphosate along the waterways, an overview of alternatives to spraying herbicides, and a choice of alternative draft of resolutions for council consideration, which would bring the Sebastian aquatic weed control practices in line with that of many other communities in Florida, including Miami-Dade and Martin Counties, and the cities of Stewart, Hollendale, and North Miami.
You have 15 seconds, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
In making this request, we have the support of the Clean Water Coalition of Indian River County, Pelican Island Audubon Society, any Indian River neighborhood association, as well as I mentioned, thesebastianpropertyownersassociation.com.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And I'm also at your service, should you need anything or need any supporting documentation, I am willing to help in any way possible, thank you.
Very much appreciate that. Anyone else in the public who should speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening, my name is Dr. Robert Betta, and I live at 533 Acacia Avenue here in Sebastian. I'm also a member of the Friends of the San Sebastian River and the Sebastian Property Owners Association, which I don't consider myself very political, but I consider myself very concerned about our town, which I love very much. The other day, last week, I was at Hardy Park, at which time I spotted a pickup truck with a trailer, and it said "Applied Aquatics" on it, which, I must say, over the last couple of months, I've become very, very involved in this phenomenon that faces us all, and the phenomenon, it involves a lot of poisons. Poisons get into our chain of life. When we spread things on the earth that are toxic and poisonous, we might be aiming at a villain that we think is right, but there are a lot of, what do they call it, collateral damage in war, and we shouldn't be waging war against our earth, so I urge you to please stop using these poisons. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Tammy Williams, 1623 U.S. One. I'd like to use the projector to show some documents that I've already gave you in advance. Would there be a problem with that, Mr. Mayor?
No, no problem. Did you give them to MIS?
Pardon me?
Did you give them to our MIS department two weeks ago?
Yes, we submitted them.
Is that to distribute to the council members?
All right, there's no objection from council, I'll let them do it. Go ahead. Just for future reference, sir, if you want to do something like that, you need to meet with, you need to ask the clerk to get with the MIS so they can come forward and help you, so that you'll actually know what to do when you come forward.
I did call.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, basically what I want to do is, I want to point down on this document, back in May 22nd, 19, 2013, on the agenda, this is a reference to the cemetery, the purchase, and I wanted to make sure that the community is aware of what exactly what was said and how we want about purchasing that property. And it says on the sand, the last paragraph, the last sentence, this would recreate, this would create more space for lot sales, and the sand sales could equal the value of the property. That's the sugar sand that was on that property, it could equal the value of that property. So I pulled out the appraisal on that property, and that sand is worth $375,000 back then in 2013. I want the public to know that everybody, most of the people in this town, especially Mr. McPartland and the mayor, was on the council at that time when we made this purchase, and they were aware that there was surplus sand on that property that was to be considered to be proper way of disposing it, is to appraise it, to get rid of it, and put the money, according to your minutes, back into the trust account. And according to your documents, it says right here, personal property, if upon recommendation of the respective department head, the city manager has determined that personal property owned by the city is no longer needed, was obsolete, the property may be sold by bid or auction. Notices of the sale shall be published once in the newspaper of general circulation in the city. The city manager shall establish a price or determine sale by auction. However, if the depreciated value of any personal property is in excess of $4,000, well, one of the guys that gave a bid said it was $8,000, which I thought was a joke, but at least he said it was worth $8,000. Al Mena said it was worth $375,000, and the city manager at the time, I mean, the community director at the time, who became our city manager later on, Joe Griffin, also was part of this.
Mr. Mayor?
So-
Have a point of order, please.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
No, sir. Can you pause his time so he doesn't lose any time on this?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to ask a question of the attorney, this is a matter that's been referenced to the state's attorney's office, and I'm questioning whether we should be entertaining this conversation at this point in time?
My recommendation, I mean, pursuant to our council rules, we let the public come up and speak on anything, I would let him have his say, but my admonishment to council is I would suggest nobody comment or enter into a discussion, because there is still a criminal investigation going on.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that we had our ground rules on this, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't want to impact his time at all.
I know you don't, I know you don't, so you didn't, go ahead.
Okay, so, with that being said, it's been established when we purchased the property, we've got a value of $375,000 at that point in time. Fast forward to 2017, we're in the process now, somebody decides we're going to start clearing that property, and instead of having it appraised like you're supposed to, and then have either a bid or an auction done on it so that we get the top dollar for the community, staff went ahead and got two bids, and didn't properly execute contracts, as a matter of fact, there is no written contract, and then we found body parts, bones, on the property. You would think that would raise a red flag, and Mr. McPartland or Mr. Hill would say, hey, what's going on down there? That did not cross the dais, why wasn't that brought to our attention? But no, nothing was said, it was kept low-key, nobody wanted to bring it up, we asked to put it on the agenda. If you check your meetings, go online, we had one of our representatives come up and ask for an update. To this day, we had to wait until we filed papers with you guys in the police department, and now flawed the Department of Law Enforcement is investigating, and it should not have been that. And besides, proceeding illegally to dispose of the property, your site plan for, I looked at the permit, you called it grubbing. Now, I've pulled permits for site, for sand mining in this town and excavating, they've made us do jump-throughs. Your site plan was incomplete, no engineering on it.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on any item not currently on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Well, not five minutes, but thank you, anyway.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Ring, 407 Gary Lane, Sebastian. I'm here and I'm hoping I'm not going to sound so negative, but I am going to speak my mind. And I did enjoy serving on the Natural Resource Board. I served three years and last year I was chair. But every time you seem to object to what our representative was willing to listen to, he personally made your life miserable. He told me that I had broken the law and that they were going to humiliate me in front of you people by making me resign from the board in front of council. I did not break the law. I'm sure those minutes were gone over tooth and nail, but they called me up on the phone and told me this. So I started laughing at them because they said, "If I broke the law, I don't think it'd be on the phone and by a person who would not identify himself." Because it was Frank, but the other gentleman wouldn't even identify who he was. So I'm not very pleased with the way City Sebastian personnel treat the people who are serving on the board. The other person, I was called up in the middle of the afternoon and I was told that I better get on the email accounts, which is illegal, and that Frank was canceling the meeting for that night. And I asked why he was canceling the meeting. I was chair. And he said it was because of lack of quorum. Well, I said, "I'm sorry, you can't call lack of quorum before the meeting time." Well, I did write that one up. And Mr. Gingrich and I had a discussion about that and then city manager and I had a discussion about that. And what came out of that discussion was that the Robert's Rules of Order and when can you call quorum and not. So we decided that we needed to, in the middle of the afternoon, I was not going to accept. So we hired somebody to do the minutes for everybody. That was a really good, positive thing that came out of that meeting. So we also, we came back on TV because I was not the only person complaining about this, was that the meetings, when they weren't on television, were only open like five minutes before the board started and it was completely dark until then. And people were congregating outside in the dark. And I was not the only one who complained about that. So we did then put the other, all the boards back then on TV. And it was, that was a positive thing, too. But the other thing is, the good old boys, if you disagree with them, they try to get to you. And they try to get to you by telling you you broke the law. They tried to tell you that. And they'd asked me to resign. And they said, before they'd let me be chair, they would sunset the Natural Resource Board. I'm not the only person they pulled that one on because I talked to another chair and they pulled it on her, too. And she resigned. And she said to me, "What did you do?" I said, "I went to city manager." Because, you know, at that time, nobody else wanted to be chair. Alan had resigned and George, who was in the meeting between me and Alan, he only did two meetings and he disappeared, we never knew where he went. But I just wanted to let you know that I did enjoy it. I mean, I would not have stayed there if I didn't think we were accomplishing something. But on the other hand, you get the pushback from city employees if you are not agreeing with them. And I got a lot of pushback. I'm getting pushback today. So I just wanted to let council know that I am not going to take the pushback. Didn't take it before and I'm not going to take it now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much for your service. The Natural Resource Board is a very important board that we have in the city and it does a lot of good for us. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on any issue not currently on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 12, new business, item 12A. Authorize the budget adjustment to appropriate general fund reserves in the amount of $55,500 to execute an agreement with the Baldridge Group.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, as council knows, we have been working diligently to try to put together a true comprehensive strategic plan for the city and why that's important and it gives us a way to manage our budgets. It sets goals of how we're going to make the city better. It holds everyone accountable on what the city's doing. It provides transparency. And we as staff have taken some pretty good stabs at getting some ideas out there. We attended a seminar with this Baldridge Group. They do this all over the country. And I think the professional help and with all of the ideas that he has throughout the country will give us an opportunity to bring his expertise in and help us get a plan that's going to be usable, it's going to make sense, and it's going to add value to the city. One thing I've stressed since I've gotten here is we need to plan on how we do things. Being busy and making things happen is good. Being busy and making change and making things progressive and making sure that what we're doing is doing the best with what we have is better. And this is a piggyback. They have contracts all over the country and one of them happens to be Prince William County, Virginia. So we meet the piggyback contract stipulation for the money. And I would ask council to approve this proposal so that we can try to get this plan moving forward and get it adopted.
All right, that's great. Council, what's your pleasure on item 12A?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, council discussion at this time.
Is there any opportunity that we can, you think you can get this done by budget time next year so you can integrate the budget and the strategic plan?
I would hope to. I mean, it's a, his proposal is several months long. There's nine months of meetings with staff, one meeting a month over the time. It could happen quicker depending on how we get integrated, but it's a nine-month, it's about a nine-month process for him, in his opinion.
Yeah, all right.
Anything else? Great idea, you know, just having actual plans that are workable, I think are incredibly important. So I think it's the right way to go. Full call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Item 12B, sort of League of Cities items. The first one is to provide a delegate for the FLC conference.
Why are you looking at me? You made it go last year because you said I was a newbie.
I'm just thinking you did such a good job. I don't know if anyone would object to Vice Mayor Kitchen being our delegate.
I do not have a problem.
All right.
I 30, no, I'm sorry.
What?
You're in, Linda.
Okay, very, very good. And does anyone have any, anything to submit legislatively to the league? All right, thank you for that. City Attorney Matters.
Nothing from me tonight.
All right, thank you. City Manager Matters? Mr. Carlyle?
Yeah, one thing I would encourage the public to do, the 100-year of the Sebastian Inlet display is out front in the, in front of the lobby. And it is a great depiction of how that inlet was opened and how it was maintained and the pitfalls. And it goes through the whole history of the Sebastian Inlet. And I got to tell you, if you sit back and look at it in the pictures, it's pretty impressive how they managed to do that, starting with shovels and dynamite to military explosives. It's a pretty good, pretty good read if you read it and they're dredging it today. So I encourage residents to stop by City Hall and take a look at that and spend some time there. So I appreciate it, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
I just want to mention the next council meeting's going to be 5:01 on June 26.
5:01, June 25th, very good.
5:01 PM, 5:01 PM because of the public hearing.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Mayor, wasn't there, didn't the last time we did this, the mayor and I shut up like hourly because we forgot it was 5:01?
Oh, I'm sure the clerk will go to minus 15 pounds.
I've got it settled on point, I probably will be taking this one.
We got a couple of 5:01's.
I got a question on that 5:01 meeting because I also got a letter from Ms. Fraser about because they're having a stakeholder meeting on the CBG.
That's it.
Does the same?
That's at our meeting.
All right. Because I got it twice then with my regular roll and my...
So she'll keep reminding us.
All right.
We don't want you to forget, Bob.
All right.
All right, thank you. Now we come to item 16, council matters. Today, council, we have to go ahead and do our charter officer evaluations. I will go ahead and start that and let everyone know that I've spoken with each of our charter officers privately. I've let them know how I feel they're doing. I think we have rock stars as charter officers and I'm very, very honored to be able to work with them, so. Councilmember Avino, would you like to speak on the charter officer evaluations at this time?
I concur with that statement. Hopefully, I have said it throughout almost, November would be two years, actually, but the time that you've been here, that I tell each and one, every one of you, I appreciate you and the work that you do. I think the city's doing great and it's a concerted effort and thumbs up, 100%. A for effort.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yeah, I agree with what's been said about the charter officers. I do intend to fill out the forms and provide them to Human Resources. I'll do that within the next couple of weeks. That way they're in the public domain. I do have a question because one of the things that's on this item is to talk about merit increases. And I would suggest that for the city manager and city clerk that we, and I'm not, I'm limiting the attorney out for a reason I'm not going to ask about, that we stipulate that they will receive any merit increase at the same percentage that any other city, other city staff receive. And also, the city attorney is basically a contract employee, so you don't fall under the same guidelines we do with that. So, okay, I just want to make sure that that is the reason I was stipulating you out on that. Okay, so, and I'm very satisfied. I think we're moving forward very well.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yep, I also have met with all three charter officers personally and I have no problems. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember McPartlin?
I've completed my evaluations, but I haven't had the time to sit down with each one individually. And, you know, I concur with Mr. Dodd. I mean, everybody, we have aces here all around. Mr. Stokes I worry about because Port St. Lucie, I got to go down there and fight with him every once in a while because they try and steal him away. But I know he likes it here because it's closer to his home and he doesn't want to deal with the craziness that goes on there every given day. And I constantly check with you.
Thank you. With that, I would recommend that we make compensation adjustments based upon contractual obligations to the clerk and the city manager.
I'll second that.
All those papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you.
Next?
Next.
Okay, I do have something to say just because every time I hear the public comment that came about tonight, it makes it appear as though we're not doing anything. And I think it's, we need to reiterate for the public that the city of Sebastian has chosen, unlike a lot of other municipalities, to take the step to try and ascertain what we are going to do if we don't use herbicides. And I believe it's the right approach. And I think that we need to know exactly what we can do to solve the issues related to the growth of the grass. And so the city manager is in the process of putting together a report to the council. I believe that we should have as wide a public distribution and discussion on that as possible so that we, we talk to the community as a whole, as much as we can get them involved about the impact of the changes we'll have to make before we make any decision on that. But the city is doing something with that. And it's important that we, I think, that we solve the problem correctly as opposed to just arbitrarily saying we're going to not do something that may force us to do something that's worse than that, than using the glyphosate. So I think it's important for people to understand that we are doing something. It's not that we're not doing anything. We all got a letter this week, and I can just reference one from a lady who said that at a recent meeting in the Sebastian Water Property Association, she was told that algae is in the air and people are breathing and dying and that glyphosate is causing algae. Well, I can't believe any way that glyphosate causes algae. I don't know how that comes about. So we have to be very careful and people have to be very careful that they look at realistic sources on this as opposed to, as opposed to reading the doomsday innuendo that's coming about. So that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. Councilmember Avino?
I concur with Mr. Dodd on that. I'll expand a little bit. I agree, I've said it before. I think that the public needs to look at empirical data, real data, not internet rhetoric and make knee-jerk reactions. So I think that council is doing the right thing. I know there were some comments made that we haven't been meeting with the folks that have been coming up and talking about it. And Mr. Carlyle can vouch. I met with him and two folks from the community just the other week to further discuss the glyphosate issue. And we, I think we're doing our due diligence and we're doing right by the citizens. And that's just my personal opinion on it. And I'd also like to thank Sebastian Police Department and everybody else that participated in the first annual truck pull Saturday. It was awesome. We had the hippo from Hippo Roofing and the Chick-fil-A cow out there and a bunch of little kids pulling one of the pickup trucks. It was a, it was a good time and I appreciate everybody's hard work. And Brian Benton, thank you for all your help. And we're looking forward to seeing you guys next year. And that's all I got.
Great, congratulations on that event. I heard it was very fun. The community really liked it and we look forward to seeing you grow that event year to year. Madam Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, Councilmember McPartlin?
Well, I hate to hit, kick a dead horse. Going back on the glyphosate because I attended a couple more community meetings, you know, and I hear a lot of misinformation. attended a couple more community meetings, you know, and hear a lot of misinformation. Mr. Carlyle, how much information have you received from the public for a contractor or an alternative? That's not just this made-up stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Obviously, hand excavation, not any contractors, just a hand excavation. There's been the letters that Dr. Cox had put out with some biological carp and also some grinding of vegetation, more manual-type things. I've received any information from anybody or any contacts from anybody except for, one lady gave me the contact from the University of Florida, Dr. Farrell. I spoke with him at length about biological. He is from the Center of Invasive Species, and he, he doesn't have any biologicals because they haven't been proved effective, they've been proven more ineffective, though we actually have some biologicals already. Alligator weed beetle, we already have it, the state put it in. So, and obviously, we're doing some manual as well. I met with another contractor today that has some different manual equipment that has promise for manual excavation. What it's going to cost, I don't know. We just met with him today. But the public will say, we have all these contacts, but I don't get the contacts. So if you have contacts, email them to me, please. Help me.
All right. I've also heard about a bunch of medical studies where there's cancer, cancer clusters, pediatric cancer, not only in Sebastian, but around the Lake Okeechobee. Has anyone provided you with a medical study about cancer clusters around Lake Okeechobee in City of Sebastian, on the Treasure Coast, anywhere?
No, I haven't really asked for that information. I was, it was mentioned at a meeting that Glades County had a cancer cluster, so I contacted Dr. Pepe, who is over the Department of Health. He said that there was been no study that he's aware of, and he's been there, I think, four or five years. I talked to the Health Department in Indian River County, and she doesn't know of any cluster or any increases in cancer. I pulled down some documentation from the Cancer Institute of Health for cancers, and they're either declining or remaining steady for most of the cancers that are in, in the area. But I, my charge wasn't really to look for cancer clusters or to prove or disprove it. I've been more looking at alternatives. So these are just some things. If someone mentioned it, I look at it because I want to know if the data is there to support it.
Right. Well, I'm just kind of reiterating, nobody's mentioning a study that was actually done because I've also contacted Department of Health, Indian River County, Okeechobee, Glades, Hendry, St. Lucie County, Martin County, and there's none of that going on. But somebody's referencing a study, like the city is just shooting poison. Now, is glyphosate listed as a poison?
No, sir. EPA just reregistered it.
Okay.
No, EPA, yeah. EPA.
All right. And you're still working on your?
Again.
Document, requesting all the information, and you haven't received a lot of information.
No, sir. And again, like I said, I met with another contractor today that has a different type of manual equipment. So we're looking at this from all angles, we're looking at all options. I met with another spray contractor to talk about different sprays. I've looked at different sprays and researching the cost of those sprays and the application costs so that I can present all that information to you, even the natural sprays, the vinegar sprays that are labeled for use on territorial, terrestrial, but not aquatic. So there's a lot of work being done on this. I've got a stack about that high on my desk, and I've heard a lot of people say they have a stack that high, but they don't provide it, they haven't provided it to me.
And again, just so the council knows, is because I've been doing a lot of research, and I even contacted Mr. Carlyle, because there was, I guess, a bunch of goats hired in New York City to eat invasive species, and they did such a great job that they had to lay off four goats, but Mr. Carlyle told me goats can't swim, so they just wind up being maggot fodder, is what he told me. All right? That's, but I know Mr. Carlyle has taken this very seriously, as is the rest of the council.
Right.
But again, we're just looking for true information, not innuendo, and supporting documentation to the fact. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and I have nothing further to say on that at all. Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
I just want to, again, commend the Sebastian Police Department and their officers for life-saving things. They do that on a daily basis, and we should nominate most of them or all of them, if not.
Right, here, here.
The few that were nominated today.
Great. All right, there being no further business, we adjourn.